Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting. Today is Thursday, September 17th, 2020, and the time is now 7:02 PM. First up on our agenda is delegations. So we would like to give an opportunity for anybody that is attending this meeting to address the Board of Finance. So if you are watching this webinar and would like to address the Board of Finance, you can raise your hand. I'll give you a moment to speak out. So you can raise your hand by clicking on the three dots and raising your hand, or you may speak at this time. Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to our next agenda item, which is the new business this evening, which is the bonding resolution for an additional $985,000 for the public safety building project. What I would like to do is to read the motion, have a second, and then open it up for discussion. So can I ask somebody from our board to please read the resolution that Anna had submitted earlier?
I could, or Ann could, yeah. Either one, go ahead, Ann. You can, go ahead.
Okay. Resolved that the resolution entitled, quote, "Resolution Amending a Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $5 Million for the Planning, Design, Acquisition, Construction, Equipping, and Furnishing of a Public Safety Building and Authorizing the Issuance of $5 Million Bonds of the Town to Meet Set Appropriation and Pending the Issuance Thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose." As per Section 1 of the resolution, the resolution entitled, quote, "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $5 Million for the Planning, Design, Acquisition, Construction, Equipping, and Furnishing of a Public Safety Building and Authorizing the Issuance of $5 Million Bonds of the Town to Meet Set Appropriation and Pending the Issuance Thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose," end quote. Adopted at a referendum held February 20th, 2019, the resolution is hereby amended to increase the amount of each of the appropriation and the bond authorization set forth by $985,000 from $5 Million to $5,985,000. Said resolution, a copy of which is attached here too, is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the legal voters of the town at a referendum to be scheduled by the Board of Selectmen. We waive the reading, the resolution in its entirety. A copy has been and will continue to be available for inspection in the town clerk's office.
Okay, thank you, Ann Schicello. Do I have a second? Thanks, Ann Santoro. Now I will open it up for discussion for anybody wishing to get some last-minute comments in on what we are about to do tonight. I'll just go around the circle. Ann Santoro, would you like to make any comments?
Sure. Yeah, you know, I'm very pleased that by using the FEMA money that we've reduced our need to borrow in trying to realize the project. So with the $985,000, that's about just under 45% of the initial request we had for the 2.2 million. And as you recall, the 2.2 was considered affordable by Board of Selectmen and by a number of members of the Board of Finance. So here we are at much less requests. So that's a good thing. And by using that money, you know, we will have reduced our request for an increase in debt, so to speak, and obviously reduce the burden on the taxpayers. So for me, you know, reducing that burden on the taxpayers is very important. And my other thinking about why I would say yes to this resolution, the bonding resolution, is if you take together the $985,000 and the 1.2 FEMA dollars, this really allows the town to complete the financing of the project as it's reflected in the total project budget. And so we don't have to piecemeal the project. And I think a number of us on this board and a number of selectmen had been concerned about that. So the financing really allows the project, as it was developed by the departments, the four departments involved, the Vision Committee, and as it was designed by Silver Petricelli, to be realized, you know, in its entirety. So it's so important for continuity, for consolidation of services, and to avoid, you know, future extra costs. So, and I think those things were a priority for the departments and I think for the Vision Committee on which I served as well. So, you know, those two reasons for me are certainly sufficient to think that this is a good thing and to be positive and vote yes for it. Thanks.
Hey, thank you, Ann Santoro. Peter DeRosa, would you like to make any comments this evening?
Sure. I'm thrilled that we're here and have the resolution in front of us. I will acknowledge that it was a bit of an arduous process to get to this point, but we did get here. And I want to echo a couple of the things that Ann mentioned in terms of the FEMA money was certainly a welcome and, you know, reduced the initial ask for the bonding money, which I think is beneficial to everybody. I'm glad we were able to reach a compromise in terms of even, you know, setting aside some of the FEMA money for some other unexpected expenses. But I'm glad that we're here. I'm glad that this is in front of us. And I'm optimistic that we're going to see this move forward. And I look forward to seeing the construction.
Okay, thank you, Peter. John Birmingham, do you have any comments?
Yes.
Discussion points?
It's been a long road to get to this point. We started out a number of years ago with a task force. They did their job, put in many hours. And then once they decided on a place to put the police station, the Vision Committee took over. And through their diligence and all the hours and hard work, they came up with the numbers that we needed. And you'll remember back with the board before us that the appropriation for this project was $6 Million. The board at that time decided that they'd approve $5 Million and they would consider approving the other $1 Million after they got more information. So fast forward to this board, who wanted even more information, which they were given. And now we have before us now this resolution for that extra $1 Million that we should have had in the beginning. But it's $985,000, which is close to a million. And the rest, to make up for that $7.2 Million, is where the FEMA money comes in. That being said, that FEMA money takes a lot of the, what you said, for the taxpayers, would take a lot of their, I can't think of the word right now, but a lot of their...
Would remove some burden from their...
Burden is what I'm looking for. A lot of the burden off of their backs. And although we didn't approve the total 1.5, it took a little over $300,000 to put maybe in some of the other things that the town needs. As far as I'm concerned, $300,000 plus should be in the contingency fund, which could be used for the boardwalk. It could be used for sidewalks or some of the roofs we did in town. And that's fine. But I'm glad we're at this point. And I hope that we can move forward and get this place building constructed so the police can get out of where they are now.
Okay. Thank you, John. Let's move on to Rich Steele.
Yes, I really don't have very much to say except that because of the length of time that this project has gone through transpiring, I would hope that we could get the police moved in as quickly as possible. And if that means that they're in before all the construction is done, I'm all for that because their current facility is a place that they need to get out of. The others have all touched upon all the financial aspects and the use of the FEMA funding, so I won't rehash that. But just to me, the important thing from understanding how the communications equipment works for the various departments that are going to reside within this building, I think that needs to be a very high priority to get started on that so that then we can move people in as quickly as possible. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Ann Schicello?
Okay. So I guess my main focus throughout this was trying to reduce the burden on the taxpayer. And I think we have, as everybody said, it was 2.2 down to $985,000. Secondly, it's important to get the police out of the current building where they are and get them in a new location. I'm excited to finally have the complete price for the project so that we can move forward with that. And I'm excited to have this go to referendum and give the town a chance to have their say and support the project. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ann. I'll start off just by thanking our police and public safety personnel for all that they do for our town. I think it's an appropriate time to state that I definitely am not in favor of defunding, arbitrarily defunding the police at this time. I've seen that happen in so many of the great cities in our country, and they've done so at their own peril. So I think it's a good time to just step up and acknowledge that, you know, our public safety personnel do a good job for our town. We appreciate them. And I'm happy to see that we are advancing an initiative that gets them out of the Main Street Dominion Building. Okay? But we're here to talk about the capital, a capital project. So we're talking about capital funding. And we're here to vote tonight only on the $985,000 bonding appropriation. For those folks listening, we've already approved 1.2 out of a total of $1.7 Million from a FEMA reimbursement, you know, checks that we recently received. But tonight it's just about the $985,000. As Ann Santoro and John Birmingham mentioned, originally when this plan came before us, it was for $6 Million. We, the Board of Finance and subsequently at referendum, approved a $5 Million appropriation for this project. The theory being that that $1 Million was the cost of six holding cells in a Sally Port. And so when the number, when true numbers were determined about what this project would cost, they could come back to us and ask for more money, which basically is how this process has been going. Finally, a week ago, the Chairman of the Public Safety Building Vision Committee made a very good attempt to be as transparent as possible about all of the, you know, upcoming expenses that the taxpayers can expect with regard to this building. He laid out a timeline, so to speak, and a source of funding, whether it be from the operating budget, the operational budget, the capital plan, or additional bonding down the road. So I think at this point, we tried to be as transparent as we can. And we've also urged the first selectmen and the Board of Selectmen to make sure that a safe and fair referendum is in place so the taxpayers can weigh in on this during this COVID-19 shutdown. So that's happened as well. So I am in favor of approving this bonding request appropriation tonight. But it is no secret that I've never been an advocate for this plan. I have always preferred the option of building new in a better location in town, even if that meant spending $10 to $12 Million further down the road. But this is the plan before us. And even though I'm personally not in favor of this plan, I will be voting yes tonight to move it forward because I think the taxpayers deserve a chance to weigh in, especially since we've done all that we could to get them as much information as we could. If you consider that the price of the three Sally Ports and the three holding cells and the one Sally Port are now down to, I believe, $735,000, then the total project would have been in January 2019, So with the $1.2 Million appropriation from FEMA funds, that actually gives this Vision Committee $200,000 more than they originally requested a year and a half ago. But it also gives them about $466,000 more than that plan had called for originally. So that's quite a substantial amount of money over and above what they originally asked the taxpayers to vote on. So again, I'm in favor of moving this forward. Personally, I'm in favor at referendum of voting for the $1.2 Million to go towards this project to get the police out of where they are as quickly as possible. At referendum, I would not be in favor of voting for the additional bonding appropriation. I'd like, I'd like to see the team work with what they have, include with the 1.2. But again, this is for the voters to decide. But I just wanted to make sure I was absolutely clear about my opinion and my stance because a lot of people have been repeating things that I've said. I just wanted to clear that up for the record. So with that, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. We have discussions. And now Anna Johnson would like to speak. Yes?
Yeah, if I may, thank you. I just wanted to point out that in the resolution that was read, the reason that it was worded "special town meeting" called by the Board of Selectmen is because technically it's a special town meeting that gets adjourned to referendum. So I just wanted to point that out for the board.
Can we state it that way? We can change the language to state it that way?
Because it was read in that it was going to be approved by the voters at a referendum. So perhaps just say, "at a special town meeting adjourned to referendum" so that it clears, you know, it clarifies that point.
At a special town meeting that is adjourned to referendum. Okay. So we can just take a vote on that resolution as amended by Ann Schicello? Anna Johnson?
Okay, so I just wanted to point out that there will actually, even though it says "special town meeting" to be adjourned to referendum, there will actually be no special town meeting. It'll like be canceled. It's just the way, you know, it needs to go through the process.
Is that because of the COVID? That things are done differently?
Correct, because normally we would have the town meeting and we would adjourn it to a referendum. But it's not desirable, you know, in light of the pandemic to have a town meeting. So we'll just, you know, go through the record of canceling it and then just go straight to referendum.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question about the referendum? And I'm not sure if you're the right person to ask about this.
I'll try.
But because of COVID, I know that absentee ballots have been, the applications have been sent to everybody for the general election. And I understand that that's not possible for the referendum. But I do understand that there is curbside voting. And so if there are individuals that may not have physical impairments or other impairments that would necessitate that curbside voting, would that ability to do curbside voting be available to people if they have a fear of going into a polling place and being exposed to COVID?
So actually, I noticed that Wendy Sims, one of the registrars, is at this meeting. So perhaps it would be, you know, more appropriate for her to answer that question for you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you in advance, Wendy.
Hi. Yeah, because we cannot, because the governor's executive order to extend absentee balloting to allow for COVID as an excuse was not extended to referendum. We think it is beneficial to people in town to provide curbside voting for those who are concerned about COVID, about contracting and/or spreading the virus. So yes, we will make that available to the townspeople who would prefer to stay in their vehicles, to stay outside and not come into the polling place. So we will provide that, yes.
Thank you, Wendy. And will there be public announcement of that through press or through the marquees at our town sites, like the high school and town hall? Just some way so that the public can be aware of that?
Yes, I believe we will try to make that known to people. We always have curbside voting available to people with infirmities and whatnot. But yes, I think we will try to make that more widely known.
Thank you, Wendy.
Also, it's my understanding that the Board of Selectmen will hold a special meeting on Monday, September 21st. And that is when that they will, I guess, make a motion to move this to referendum. And the tentative date is October, Thursday, October 1st. Perhaps Mark Nickerson, I think he's still on the call. Maybe he could confirm that for us.
Yes, that's true. That's exactly what we said last night at a Board of Selectmen meeting. We're meeting on Monday to schedule the referendums. The one referendum, two questions.
One referendum, two questions. One for the bonding appropriation of 985 and one for the 1.2 for FEMA funding to be allocated towards the PSB. Very good.
That's the plan, and that's how it sits currently.
Very good. Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion about what is before us?
I have one.
Yes.
Thanks, Camille. For Anna Johnson, I was just wondering if you have sort of a revised set of numbers just on even that mill rate increase that could be expected based upon the $985,000 bonding resolution. As you recall, we had scenarios for mill rate increase. It was a slide in the Vision Committee presentation based upon the 2.2. So that might be helpful to, if any, any information in that regard. And it would be, you know, available for folks to see. Thanks.
So I, in looking at, so we already bonded $3 Million this August. The plan is we will bond an additional $2 Million in August of next year, 2021. And then should the $985,000 bond resolution get approved at referendum, the plan would be to bond that in August of 2022. And with that said, the total debt payments would be a little over $7.7 Million. The average annual payment for that, for the town would be $386,600. And what that looks like for the average, like you had a home assessed at $250,000, it would be $44.25. $350,000 would be $61.96. And $450,000, $79.66. And, you know, this is just, I mean, as I said, it looks at the $3 Million bonded, you know, actual numbers and estimates for the subsequent two bonds that we have on this project.
So Anna Johnson, the numbers that you just referenced are for the year. The increase would be for the year, not month, correct?
Correct.
And that would be for the total, that would be for the total bonding of how much, the entire package?
$5,985,000.
$5,985.
Correct.
Very good. Good, that was a great question, Ann.
You know, just, could, Anna, could you repeat? Thank you, Camille. Anna, could you repeat the last number for the home assessed at $450,000? Because your audio went in and out. I couldn't hear it.
$79.66.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion points from the board this evening? Or questions? I see everybody is muted. I'm thinking everybody has said what they needed to say. Correct? Okay. So then we are ready for a vote. So if everybody could please unmute themselves. I'm going to call for the votes, one by one. So Karen Zemetrick has it correctly for the record and just so there's no confusion. And I'm just going to go in order of people on my screen. So Ann Santoro, you are first. How do you vote? Yay. John Birmingham, how do you vote?
Yay.
Richard Steele, how do you vote?
Yay.
Peter DeRosa, how do you vote?
Yay.
Ann Schicello, how do you vote?
Yay.
And I myself, Camille Alberti, vote yay. So that makes for a unanimous decision to approve this appropriation tonight. 6:00. Thank you, everyone. And thank you for all the hard work and diligence in getting to this place right here. So with that, that concludes the new business. I will open it up for public discussion. I see we still have about 10 members of the public in our audience. Would anybody like to speak? If so, please raise your hand. Or you can, okay. I see we have Dan Price. Yes, go ahead, Dan.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much. As a member of the Vision Committee, who has put, all of us have put a lot of work into this project. I appreciate you all sending this to the town to let the town vote for it. And I just, I just wanted to say thank you for your vote tonight. That's pretty much it.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dan, for all of your efforts over the past several years. Anybody else attending this webinar that would like to address the Board of Finance this evening? If so, you can unmute yourself or raise your hand. I'll call for one more time. Anybody attending the meeting, they would like to address the board during public discussion? Seeing no hands and hearing no voices, I will close public discussion and move on to Agenda Item 5, Board Comments. Does anybody from our board have any final comments to make this evening? Seeing a lot of head shaking and no voices, I'll conclude that Agenda Item of Board Comments this evening and entertain a motion to adjourn. and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ann Santoro.
I'll second.
Thank you, Peter DeRosa. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.